This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that my colleagues and everyone in attendance please silence their electronic devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. At this time, I'm asking everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. Mrs. Melnick.
The School Board is pleased to recognize the Virginia High School League's Group Six State Field Hockey Championship Team from Cox High School. Let's meet them. Lindsay Arsenal. Zella Bailey. Lauren Boucher. Elizabeth Brethwaite. Gillian Brinek. Zoe Campisi. Stevie Drum. Greta Hahn. Sidney Hillier. Mia LaRusso. Kylie Levine. Samantha Maiden. Anna Mason. Taylor Schooler. Emmy Schwartz. Abigail Spear. Sarah Spear. Madison Warren. Samantha Zivna. Assistant Coach Cynthia Hiltz. And Head Coach Taylor Roundtree. Almost 90 minutes went by in the state championship game against rival First Colonial before a goal was scored. Cox claimed the 1-0 victory in the waning minutes of double overtime. With this win, Cox High School's field hockey now has a record 20 state championship titles. That's awesome. Coach Roundtree summed up her team by stating, "All of them have a very strong work ethic, both on the field and in the classroom." Not only did they represent Cox High School, but they represented Virginia Beach Public Schools as true student athletes of the highest caliber. Congratulations to our VHSL Group... Well, that says five, but we're six. Group Six Field Hockey State Champions.
VHSL Girls Volleyball Champions, Group Five. Our next recognition is for Virginia's 2018 State Girls Volleyball Champions in Group Five. Let's meet the championship team from Princess Anne High School. Jaslee Baylor. Chloe Boytrago. Daria Burrows. Leila Conley. Chloe Kuz. Tanner Drew. Riley Dua. Jana Francis. Erin Gray. Kelly Hamm. Casey Horton. Elizabeth Hunt. Kaitlyn Jones. Gillian Lycans. Ella Mangels. Janay Brooke Marcia. Karina Monroy. Kellen Moorfield. Candace Nguyen. Emma Nyland. Tyler Parker. Ruby Ramsland. Noel Starr. Juliana Sutherland. Alejandra Tran Rosado. Sylvia Valente. Alyssa Vitale. Assistant Coaches Brooke Barnes. Val Callum. Erin Offlow. Russell Thompson. And Head Coach Craig Durin. On the way to winning their second title in three years, Princess Anne didn't lose a single match and finished with 29 wins and zero losses. "It's extremely hard for any team to go undefeated," Coach Durin said. "We played Class Six State Finalist Cox three times. We played Ocean Lakes three times. We played Callum two to three times. We played the best we had around us." And that's it? They took my stuff away from me. Congratulations, you guys.
For our final recognition, I'd like to ask School Board Member Ashley McLeod to step to the front of the dais, please. We are recognizing her this evening as she nears the completion of her term, which ends December 31, 2018. As a former teacher, school volunteer, PTA member, facilities master, planning steering chairperson, and community leader, Ms. McLeod brought a wealth of knowledge and experience. On the School Board, she admirably represented families and staff. Later this evening, a resolution honoring her service will be approved as part of the Consent Agenda. It reads, "Whereas the direction of public education is of paramount importance to the quality of life in the city of Virginia Beach, where the children and young adults are the city's most vital resource; and whereas the importance of excellence in education is affirmed by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach; and whereas Ms. Ashley McLeod was elected to serve Virginia Beach City Public Schools with high distinction and outstanding dedication as a School Board Member at large from January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2018; and whereas her participation has enhanced the School Board's efforts in partnership with the entire community to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Mrs. McLeod for a job well done; and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board; and be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Mrs. McLeod in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 11th day of December 2018. As a token of our appreciation, please accept a copy of the 2018 Virginia Beach Education Foundation Commemorative Print. We hope it will serve as a reminder of your time on the Board and your work for the children of Virginia Beach. Please join me in a round of applause to thank Mrs. McLeod."
Thank you very much. I'm very appreciative of that. I swore I wasn't going to do this. It's been a true honor to serve the city of Virginia Beach and the school system as a School Board Member. Over the course of the eight years, my perspective has changed. I entered as an active PTA mom to a parent of two Virginia Beach graduates. It's a great day to be cavalier and a sun devil. And now those students... You're welcome. And now those students are in college and thriving. To now being the vice president of an organization where its industry continuously shares how crucial workforce awareness and development is and that the skills, what the skills are that are so necessary to be reached in K through 12 for the jobs that we have a gap in filling across the Commonwealth. My perspective has changed from being most impressed... But that's all good. Changed from being the most impressed with workshops about AP exams and how we were getting higher scores and rigor and are they college-ready to now being more impressed with what we're doing for those students so they can leave high school and join the workforce with certifications that we've helped them achieve and prepare for further training with their job and also with dual enrollment and the important set of accomplishments that I'm most proud of over these years, legislatively reducing the number of SOL tests. As well as implementing the requirements that students have to take... Sorry, students, but have to take economics and personal finance if you just become a better citizen. So it was so important. I got started because old donation needed a new building. That's the whole reason I ran for office. And by golly, we accomplished that. I am so proud. I don't know if Tony is here tonight, but I am so proud to have served on that Facility Steering Committee twice now and to have that plan. And I'm really hopeful with the conversations earlier that we can actually get the city to support that capital improvement plan because that was of huge importance to me. Technology, rumage. 2010, just a few months after I was appointed to fill a vacancy, we prioritized and worked very hard to get every single school in Virginia Beach with whiteboards, advancing that technology that as of today is obsolete. So I'm pleased to see that we're going to keep working towards replacing those whiteboards that I fought so hard for. As well as the Unified and Classified PACE Scale. What another great accomplishment. And I was really pleased that last week, Daniel Keever, I was able to vote for an early start time. And that really had to do with M. Davis. When M. served on School Board with me the first round, I learned so much from M., and that was something she felt pretty passionately about. So I was excited to be able to actually vote for that last time. But we'll start our high schoolers a little bit sooner, we think. Later, later, sorry, yeah. And oddly enough, what has given me the most satisfaction of serving on our School Board is actually serving on a discipline committee. It may seem very odd, and you all don't understand, but when we have students come before us, it is that one opportunity. A student has gotten himself in that position, and three of us and a guidance counselor sit, and we have the opportunity to truly impact one child at that very, very moment and their parents. And so oddly enough, that actually has been one of the most rewarding things that I've had the opportunity to do. We have an amazing staff. We have an amazing school system, and I'm grateful that my children got a fantastic education, and I'm so hopeful for our additional future students. What hasn't changed in my perspective is that the priority should always be student first. Thank you.
That concludes the scheduled recognitions for this evening, Mrs. Chairwoman.
And thank you, Mrs. McLeod, for your dedication and service to our school division and to this Board. Dr. Spence, we are ready for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board. As always, I thank you for the opportunity to share with you and with our community five things to know about Virginia Beach City Public Schools this month. Number one, the 21st Annual School Report Cards, referred to as Campus Compass, are now available on bbschools.com. These report cards provide a snapshot of each school's demographics and share the progress students are making towards achieving various local and state accountability measures. For example, the report cards provide information about the percentage of students reading on grade level and results from various assessments. School report cards also include data on college readiness benchmarks, school climate perceptions, and a multitude of other measures. Families can visit their school websites now to see these reports. Second, Ocean Lakes High School has earned some new bragging rights. At Ocean Lakes, one student earned a perfect score on the SAT, and another student earned a perfect score on the ACT. Senior Cole Haggard earned a perfect 1,600 on the SAT, while Junior Noah Doe earned a 36 on the ACT, the highest possible score. Interestingly, according to the ACT and the College Board, less than 1% of the approximately 2 million students who take each exam earn perfect scores. So well done, Dolphins. At number three, time is running out to give input on the front end of the Division's next strategic plan. As you know, staff is beginning the process of developing our new plan, which will be in place from 2020 to 2025. In October, we launched a virtual town hall to give the community the opportunity to weigh in and help share their thoughts on the skills and attributes that today's graduates need. Originally, the town hall was set to close on December 28. However, we have extended that date, and it will now close on Friday, January 3. So make sure to visit bbschools.com/compass/beyond2020 to give your feedback. Fourth this month, registration is currently open in our school counseling offices for two major events, the African-American Male Summit and the next Beach Girls Rock Workshop. The 12th Annual African-American Male Summit will be held January 26 at Green Run High School and is open to all VBCPS males in grades 6 through 12. In addition, the next Beach Girls Rock Workshop will be at Tallwood High School on Saturday, January 12 from 8:00 a.m. to noon. This event's open to female students in grades 5 through 8. And for both events, parents are also welcome to attend for the Parent Institute. Again, interested students should register in their school counseling office. And at number five, as this is the last meeting of this year, I do want to wish our Board as well as all of our staff members, family, and community happy holidays and best wishes for a wonderful 2019. As a reminder, our schools will operate on an adjusted dismissal on Friday, December 21, and we will be closed until January 2. And as a final note, I just want to add my name to those recognizing and thanking Mrs. McLeod for her service to the School Board. It's been an honor to work with you and to learn from you as we've continued to move this Division forward, as you said, in the service of children. So I wish you well in all of your future endeavors. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2019, 2020 schools' operating budget and the capital improvement program for 2019, 2020 through fiscal year 2024, 2025. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for the public hearing?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our November 27 meeting. The motion is made by Mrs. McLeod, seconded by Ms. Riggs. The voting board is open. The minutes have been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. The motion is made by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Voting board is open. Now it's open. The agenda has been adopted. The Consent Agenda has a resolution commending the service of our departing colleague, Mrs. McLeod. And the resolution was read earlier, but we want to continue thanking you, and hopefully you'll be able to attend some of our meetings in the future. Item B on the Consent Agenda is the comprehensive evaluation of our school counseling program as was presented to us at our last meeting under information. Item C is the Strategic Plan Ad Hoc Committee Appointments. Item D is the recommendation of the General Contractor for the School Administration Building Chiller Edition. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Mrs. Manning has made the motion, seconded by Mr. McDonald. The voting board is open. The Consent Agenda has been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion is made by Mrs. Melnick, seconded by Mrs. Felton. Is there discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The Personnel and Administrative Appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce our new administrators?
I would. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. If I could ask Danielle Bowser to please stand up. Mrs. Bowser has served with distinction as a teacher in Washington, DC, as an assistant principal in Washington, DC, most recently as assistant principal at Landstown Middle School here in Virginia Beach. And I'm very pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal at Lynn Haven Middle School. Congratulations. Now, I don't usually just tell a really fast story. When I interviewed her for the assistant principalship at Landstown Middle School, I immediately left my office and walked down to the docile team and asked them why she wasn't interviewing for a principalship. So I'm excited that Ms. Bowser has the opportunity to join us in this capacity. I understand you have some guests with you. Thank you. If I could ask Susan Burke to please stand up. Hopefully, you will recognize Ms. Burke. She has served with distinction as a teacher at Plaza Middle School and instructional specialist in programs for exceptional children, as well as a coordinator in programs for exceptional children in Virginia Beach. Most recently, she's been serving as a specialist in exceptional education in Harago County Public Schools. And I'm pleased to welcome her back and that you have accepted our recommendation for her to serve as coordinator of special education in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Congratulations. Now, did you bring a guest? Okay, all right. That's why you sat down so fast. Okay, all right. That's okay. They're all here for you. Madam Chairwoman, that concludes our... Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Next, we have two bylaw revisions to vote on. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve a change in Bylaw 1-14, Compensation and Expenses Regarding School Board Member Communication Stipend. The motion is made by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mrs. Holtz. Is there discussion? Ms. Lynetti, would you like to elaborate?
Sorry, this will be a change to Bylaw 114 under compensation. What we'll be doing is adding to the final paragraph into Section B, and we'll read, "Members of the School Board may elect to receive a communication allowance at the same rate authorized for chief officers. It's not automatically applied. If you request it, it will be provided for you." This is to compensate School Board members the amount of communication they have to do within their official duties.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, the voting board is open. Bylaw 114 has been changed to reflect School Board Members' Communication Stipend. The Chair will entertain a motion to change Bylaw 1-38, Regular Meetings, Time and Place, Order of Business, Recess Meeting, and Work Session, Public Hearing. The motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Is there discussion? Mrs. Manning?
So just a few months ago, we adopted this current bylaw so that we could de-conflict with city council meetings so that we could have more opportunity for citizens to attend both meetings. So I would like to ask the Board that we keep the bylaw the way that it is now and not adopt this new bylaw that is being proposed.
Thank you. Mrs. Wames?
Yes, I do think that we should honor the vote that we just did a few months ago. There really hasn't been enough time. I know some of my colleagues said, "Well, we haven't seen people come to our School Board meetings or city council meetings," or both. We have had actually a couple, but I don't think that's the reason to change it just after a few months. Also, both calendars, if you meet the first and third or second and fourth, both calendars have the same amount of conflict. I believe it's three, three or four days. And if we're questioning about December, we can always add a meeting during budget times. We go four weeks in a row sometimes when we meet. So to me, that's not a problem. I think our priority should be to have total access and choice for our constituents so that if they want to come and watch School Board meetings or speak to us at School Board meetings, they can do that, and the next week they can go to city council. It is not an inconvenience to us, and it is actually helping to send the message that we want input, and we want folks here at our meetings as well as city council. Again, there's no more conflict with this, and we can vote to add a meeting just as we do in February for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wames. Mr. Edwards?
The same discussions that we had both at a workshop and at the last meeting still apply. The fact that we're going four weeks in some years, depending on how Tuesday's cycle, we would be going five weeks this time of year between meetings, I don't think is good. Adding a weekly meeting would not serve us well because, you know, the administration requires time. There's a regular cycle for formal meetings and to do meetings correctly. The only new information I bring tonight, other than what we discussed previously, was that one of the most ardent proponents of changing it, such as we did, and that change was, by the way, 14 months ago when we voted. And we've gone a full year now with it. So it's not a matter of months. It's a year and a couple months since we voted. One of the most ardent, you know, called me yesterday and said, "Why are you doing that?" And I walked him through and explained, and when we were all done, he thanked me and he said he fully understood why I was suggesting that we go back.
Madam Chair, it's been brought to my attention by the clerk. Then the first line under Section A reads, "Effective January 1st, 2018." It will need to read, "Effective January 1st, 2019." We'd have to make that amendment to this proposal if it goes into effect, if you wrote it on, because otherwise it would be going backwards in time. So we just need to correct that on there.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McLeod?
Just one perspective that you might not have considered is that if you, any of those of us sitting here or anyone in the audience right now, would like to go and speak to a city council meeting, because ours are on the opposite, you actually have that opportunity. So I have gone and spoken to city council and whole other things, you know, in regard to zoning and different things because of things in my neighborhood, but that would... Any of you that are here, the staff and that, are limited to not being able to do that as well. as a result of, you know, if we went back to conflicting meetings. Just thought I'd point that out.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion?
No, one more.
Sorry?
Sorry, the clerk is pointing out to me, if I move it January 1st, it's not, you would have to come in on January 1st instead of January 8th. And once again, I'm going to have to point out that corrected. So, it would have to read, "Effective January 8th, 2019." Regular meetings of the school board would generally be held on the first and third Tuesday of each month. That would be the motion we need to make to make it correct.
Thank you. Do we need to make a new motion?
Well, you could ask Ms. Riggs and Ms. Melnick if they'll approve that change to it. All right, the clerk is also pointing out to me a third thing, that that may then affect your third meeting, your second meeting in January, you'd have to reset also. She's suggesting perhaps you make it effective February 1st, 2019, and that would, then you don't have to add an extra meeting in or change the meeting dates.
Correct.
All right, so what I'm going to propose, and hopefully catch me if I'm correct on this, is with Ms. Riggs and Ms. Melnick, if you're willing to approve a change to this that would read, "Effective February 1st, 2019." Regular meetings of the school board would generally be held on the first and third Tuesday of each month or on the dates and times designated by the school board as annual organizational meeting and as thereafter modified in the school board chambers of the school administration building. That would be the change that we would do.
Yes, because you made the motion and she seconded.
If you're not objection, do we change that motion to there?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I think there was a question on this side.
No, it's just to simply point out, you're still having to move dates because of holidays and everything. That's, nothing is going to prevent that from happening. In 2021, your December, you're going to have two December meetings. I've gone through and kind of scrolled through the calendars. I just want to point that out. It's never going to be perfect, y'all. It never is.
Yeah. It's right. It never is.
Yeah. I still do not understand why we are changing this at all. It just doesn't make any sense. There's conflict, and I have the utmost trust in our staff that months ahead of December, if we want to add another meeting, I think our staff can very well be prepared for it. We do it in budget time. Farrell gets things 15 minutes before our meeting, and he turns it around in his ready. So...
Thank you, Ms. Wames. Seeing no further comments, the voting Board is open. The motion has passed.
It's a bylaw. Madam Chair, you need a two-thirds vote. You do not have enough to...
Okay, so the motion has failed.
The motion has failed.
So, it's a two-thirds. Thank you. Next on the agenda are some information items. Our first information item is the Year Two Implementation Evaluation of the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy. Welcome, Mr. Court.
Thank you.
Is that right? Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I am Stephen Court, a Program Evaluation Specialist in the Office of Research and Evaluation. Tonight, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the Year Two Evaluation of the EBA, the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kempsville High School. The evaluation report you received in your agenda items provides additional details. In 2015, the school board approved the proposal of the EBA to open a Kempsville High School as a school within a school. It opened with its first class of freshmen in September 2016 and expanded to 10th grade in 2017-18 with a total enrollment of 230 academy students and 11 teachers working with them. The EBA aims to provide a personalized globally competitive curriculum that equips students with the knowledge and skills needed to meet the challenges of the future. Students choose core, academy-specific, and elective classes to align with their interests. These include advanced placement and dual enrollment course opportunities that will ultimately offer a pathway toward an Associate of Science and Business Administration degree while still in high school, as well as transferable credits to other colleges and universities. Students also have opportunities to earn multiple industry certifications. Near the end of Grade Nine, EBA students choose to pursue one of three strands shown on the slide. One half of the students selected the Entrepreneurship and Innovation strand, followed by Business Information Technology and Corporate Finance. Within those strands, students were offered multiple enrichment experiences during 2017-18, including 44 guest speakers and masterclass presentations, 21 field trips to local venues, and to attend regional and national conferences and competitions, and a community service component that will result in students accruing 100 hours of service by the time they graduate from the academy. School Board Policy 626 requires that all new programs be evaluated for the first two years of operation and during the final year of implementation across all grade levels. The EBA received a favorable evaluation during the first year of operation in 2016-17, and this Year Two Evaluation focused on the continued implementation of the academy across grades nine and 10, including the Program of Studies, Community Partnerships, and Enrichment Opportunities, Student Characteristics, Progress Made Toward Meeting the Academy's Goals, Stakeholder Perceptions, and the Additional Cost. The evaluation was based on data collected from the VBCPS Data Warehouse, Reviews of Documents, Discussions with the EBA Coordinator, and Surveys. The first implementation component examined was the Program of Studies. As mentioned previously, the academy program included coursework associated with three strands. As shown on the slide, various elements of the coursework were perceived favorably by students, parents, and staff. At least 80% of stakeholders agreed the learning environment was flexible, the coursework was challenging and advanced, and the coursework required students to think critically and solve problems creatively. Community partnerships were an essential component of academy implementation. Partnerships with Tidewater Community College, Babson College, and Old Dominion University provided professional learning opportunities for EBA staff members and curricular support and resources, as well as dual enrollment opportunities. During 2017-18, the EBA had partnerships with 49 local and national businesses, a gain of 10 partnerships from the academy's first year. The business partnerships are intended to develop meaningful links for students between classroom instruction and real-world experience, creating opportunities for mentoring, networking, and employment. In addition, the EBA Advisory Committee was created. The committee included a total of 14 business partners, community leaders, students, parents, teachers, and administrators who reviewed and provided feedback on key elements of the academy, including the internship program. During 2017-18, the academy students garnered multiple awards and recognitions during competitions. The academy's first Pitch Night was held, where student teams presented their business concept to a panel of local industry experts in a competition for funding. Six teams won a total of $24,500 to launch their businesses. Three EBA teams won at the National World Series of Entrepreneurship Competition. The DECA National Marketing Competition has led to 108 medals awarded. The Regional Virtual Business Accounting Finalists resulted in 27 medals awarded and 15 national qualifiers. And the State FBLA Competition led to 29 trophies being awarded, with the EBA as a whole also winning two titles. The EBA's student enrollment was 230 students, including 112 sophomores who will graduate in 2020 and 118 new freshmen in the class of 2021. This meant the academy was operating at 92% of its proposed Year Two capacity. The students were demographically similar to other freshmen and sophomores across Virginia Beach High Schools with regards to race, ethnicity, with some differences in gender and socioeconomic status, as well as in special education and gifted status. Geographically, the EBA students came from every middle school attendance zone and represented each high school attendance zone. 25% of EBA students were from Kempsville High School zone. The overarching goal of the academy was to provide students with business skills and knowledge necessary to succeed in college and the workforce. The goal was accompanied by six objectives. The first objective was for EBA students to successfully complete a program of study that focuses on critical skills, knowledge, and technology in the academy strands. EBA students are making expected progress towards program completion, with 90% or more earning a C or higher in nearly all of their courses. Further, when surveyed about the opportunities to gain the skills needed to be successful, high percentages of students, parents, and staff agreed that the EBA provided opportunities to gain academic, technological, business, entrepreneurial, and leadership skills. The second objective was that students would have an opportunity to earn an associate degree in post-secondary credit while in high school. Although this goal is more applicable to 11th and 12th grade students, the advanced placement course options during 2017-18 were in line with the academy proposal. AP Human Geography was available for freshmen and sophomores, and AP European History was available for sophomores. 53% of EBA students took these core AP courses, 100% of students passed the courses, and 56% of the AP exam takers earned a score of three or higher, which is typically needed to earn college credit. Additionally, 19% of EBA sophomores enrolled in AP Computer Science Principles or AP Psychology as electives. All students passed those courses, with 84% of AP exam takers earning a score of three or higher. Students also continued to prepare for dual enrollment options in 11th and 12th grades, with 129 students taking the Virginia Placement Test during 2017-18. The third objective was that students would exceed the objects of the standards of learning. High percentages of EBA students from 82% to 100% passed the SOL tests in math, science, and social studies. Additionally, all of the EBA students attempted to earn at least two certifications and all passed at least one of the certification tests they took. Of the 596 certification tests taken, 97% of them were passed. The fourth objective involved job shadowing. The academy's first Job Shadow Day was held last March, where 87 EBA sophomores were paired with 40 business owners and community leaders. The students spent a day in their shoes, observing their daily work activities and asking questions. The fifth objective is that EBA students will complete a long-term project through an internship/mentorship. Although the projects will not formally begin until senior year, preparations are underway. Students have been preparing via their classwork, enrichment activities, and choice of strand. Also, the academy leadership established the EBA Advisory Committee, whose members will be instrumental in helping to design and implement a long-term project and senior internship activities. The sixth objective called for the academy to establish collaborative agreements with institutions of higher education, which it has done with Babson College, TCC, and ODU, especially with ODU's Strom Entrepreneurial Center, which result in opportunities for students and staff to participate in lectures, presentations, and academy-related activities. Overall, satisfaction was very high among all four stakeholder groups, with at least 88% of survey respondents indicating that they were satisfied with the EBA. Overall, the proposed planning budget for 2017-18 and the academy proposal totaled nearly $1.1 million and included approximately $475,000 for one-time startup costs and nearly $600,000 for Year Two operating costs. The combination of actual one-time startup and Year Two operating costs amounted to just under $1 million in 2017-18 and were $79,000 less than the proposed costs. One-time startup costs for the academy from its inception through 2017-18 totaled approximately $1.1 million, which was relatively in line with the total startup costs that had been proposed for the program. An additional $435,000 is expected to be spent in 2018-19 on facilities improvements that are still needed to align with plans set forth in the academy proposal. Based on the favorable results of the evaluation, the recommendation is to continue the academy without modifications. At this time, Melissa George, Principal of Kempsville High School, will share the administration's response.
Thank you. Good evening. We concur with the recommendation provided by the report, and wanted to take this time to thank Dr. Spence and the school board for the opportunity to open the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kempsville High School and for their continued support through its inception. The continued success is also attributed to the support of several individuals within the school division, as well as our entire community and our staff, and we have a few of them here with us tonight. And we look forward to the exciting continued growth of the academy as we continue to be amazed at what our students can do when they're given an idea. So, we will now take questions from you at this time.
Do we have any questions or comments, Ms. McLeod?
And the internships that are done, I know that was not till their senior year, but can they be done in the summer prior to it with so much going on for a student? So, I'm going to turn that over to Megan Tinlin, our academy coordinator. Perfect.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much. Yes, that's part of our plan. We have been working with our industry professionals, our advisory committee. Ms. Rutsis is actually in the audience, will be their internship coordinator in the future, and the goal would be, we have a couple of different numbers set out, but that they can, they can start the process in the summer. They will get, they will get an academic block to also complete the work in the project and be able to...
How many hours are required of the internship, or have you decided?
So, what's been proposed at this point is, it's different by strand. Our entrepreneurship and innovation students and our corporate finance students, we've proposed 300 hours, 100 to be done in the summer. And our business information technology students, who attend the ATC, have a reduced of 150, 100 that can be done in the summer, 50 to be done during the year. And we worked closely with the ATC and met with Mr. Taylor last week to actually talk through some of the opportunities that are provided to them, so that students, you know, can kill two birds with one stone. If they're able to get an opportunity through the ATC, they can use it for us as well.
That's fantastic. There are so many, we know that companies like to hire their interns. They do, because they've already spent the time training them, so that's perfect.
That's exactly what we want to promote.
Well done. I'll take two.
Thank you. We can get them for you. We have them ready to go.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Seldom have I seen a report from accountability where they go in and analyze a program that had a one-line recommendation. That speaks well for the building, the planning, as well as the execution, and the proud principal and coordinator really didn't have a chance to have their staff stand, so let's recognize that.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. Regarding the 92% capacity, is the 8% just because of attrition, students leaving beyond first, second year, can't fill those spaces because students aren't prepared to fill those spaces? Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Mrs. Holtz?
When students eventually graduate from this program, what kind of college experience are they looking toward, or what kind of choices does this prepare them for?
I think it prepares them for anything that they would like to do next. We certainly, I mean, we certainly have some who are looking at Ivy League schools. We've been meeting with parents and students. They're juniors now, that first class, so, I mean, they're looking, they're taking their SATs. They certainly are doing well. We have some who are pursuing the Business Administration degree through TCC, so some will leave with the two-year associates and may go off. We have a couple, we have eight funded student businesses right now that are operating as LLCs here in our school division, and some of the students want to continue to operate their businesses. So, they really have a lot of opportunities based on what they've chosen to do through us, and really, sky's the limit. I mean, what do they want to do next? We're going to help them get there, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Mrs. Melnick?
I recently had the opportunity to visit with Dr. Bergen and Mr. Sutton and Senator De Staff, and quite frankly, y'all knocked my socks off. It's amazing. It's just amazing, and I hope that you'll let the Board know when it's pitch time.
Oh, yeah. Of course.
I'll be there. Thank you.
Thanks.
We'd like to come and watch that.
We would love to have you there. The students would love it as well.
Thank you. Just send us an invitation. Mrs. Rice?
So, this academy has a special place in my heart because I was, it was, I was able to vote yes on it as a newly-elected member. results in this range. I, I think the forty-nine partnerships speak volumes. I think the, the diversity of the demographics speak volumes. I mean, it, it's just, it's a concept that, that appeals to a wide range of our students and families, and I think that's important, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, too. Mrs. Felton?
I'd just like to say thank you so much. I'm so proud of the EBA. And just as I'd like to give you, commend you on, when I see students, when I'm at ODU, I work at ODU, and when they come into the Student Success Center, looking and aspiring to do things, the EBA comes up and they tell them that you have, have really prepared our students for the next step for college. And I'd just like to say thank you, and I'm in the background grinning and smiling, yeah, that's, that's BBCPS, and I just want to say thank you for all that you do. ODU is looking at us and they're asking me, what is it that we, what is in our water and what we're doing? But I just want to say thank you for all that you do. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Riggs?
Thanks, Megan. And Ms. George, I really appreciate it. Being a alumni of the school and being your liaison for the last couple of years, I would, I didn't want to give it up, so I kept it for another year just to continue seeing what you guys were gonna do this year with your new area, which is beautiful. I haven't seen a school turn around so quickly as you guys have turned it around, and I think it speaks a lot for the leadership that you both have given and, and put a lot of your hard time and work and hours in it, and thank you so, so much. The students are getting so much. Thank you. You're doing wonders. I love it.
Thank you.
As you can see by the number of board members who have spoken, we're very grateful for all you all are doing and for everything you do there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're always welcome. Thank you. Come visit.
Next, we have information about textbook adoptions for elementary social studies and elementary math. Welcome, Dr. Hughes.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Leslie Hughes, and I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. I'm here this evening to provide the board with the Textbook Adoption Committee's recommendation for elementary social studies. The textbook recommendation for consideration is scheduled for implementation in the fall of two thousand nineteen. Before presenting the textbook recommendation, I would like to thank Elementary Social Studies Coordinator Molly Lewis, who's with us this evening, committee members, and university experts for dedicating their time and efforts to choose the best textbooks for our students in BBCPS. On the screen, you will see the recommended first-choice textbook selection. The committee has selected Five Ponds Press as its first choice for elementary social studies. Five Ponds Press includes titles that align to each grade-level curriculum, including our community, our state, our United States, ancient world cultures, and our Virginia. These texts meet the Virginia Department of Education's curriculum framework, as well as the Virginia Beach City Public Schools objectives. The text is visually appealing, as well as age, grade, and reading level appropriate. A digital version allows students to access the text, including reallowed features from any device anywhere. Sets of six hard copies for small group instruction and additional teacher resources will also be included in the textbook adoption. This slide outlines the cost, now, this slide outlines the cost for the initial and total implementation of the first-choice textbook for the course. The total cost involved for the first year of implementation will be just over four hundred and fifty-five thousand. The total cost for the five-year implementation will just be over, just over one point one million. The cost in the first year includes those six hard copies for small group instruction per classroom, as well as the digital subscription per student. The cost in years two through five includes only the cost of the yearly digital subscription. This slide outlines the payment schedule negotiated for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Five Ponds Press has agreed to split the total implementation cost over five years without interest. Virginia Beach City Public Schools would pay just over two hundred and twenty thousand per year for five years. Thank you for your consideration of the textbook committee's recommendations. At this time, Molly Lewis, Elementary Social Studies Coordinator, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mrs. Manning?
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. I did just some quick research on Five Ponds Press and found out that they had some trouble in the past. I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yes, I am very aware.
So was accuracy something that the committee thoroughly looked into with this curriculum, with these books?
We did. We looked very deeply into that because we did have some prior implementation issues with the previous adoption, and I think some of that had to do with some business problems that are issues that the company was having behind the scenes, and it really affected, you know, they rolled out one set of textbooks and they did have some errors in the textbooks, and then they went back and they corrected that for us, and so it was a little bit of delay. We feel certain that they have corrected those issues and have met with them numerous times and have seen the product. We have other school divisions, neighboring school divisions that use the product, so we feel more secure with this.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you for asking.
Are there any other? Mrs. Melnick?
I like the five-year payment plan with no interest. That's good. Yeah, good.
Ms. McLeod?
And sometimes our viewers that are watching, because there's so many, that they think that, well, it's digital, it should be cheaper, but it isn't, because we still need to pay the person who created for their intellectual, you know, gift that they've been providing and putting together. But just sometimes people think, oh, they were not really actually buying real hold kind of textbooks. So I just sometimes think that's warranted being said.
Any other discussions?
She's suggesting I clarify. There are some, could be some actual handheld, real books, paper, but that's for instruction within, otherwise it's the digital.
Yes, that's correct.
So we're getting both, but not a full, not every title get a book book. It'll be their Chromebook digital version, right?
How about primary grades? Thank you.
So the textbooks who responded to our FP, none of the companies have big books any longer. And so, but, we have the big books in the classrooms from the previous adoption, and certainly as we work with our primary teachers, if we feel like that they need more of a resource, then we can take care of that through the language arts curriculum and make sure that they have the resources they need.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other, Mrs. Williams?
It's for this book and the math book, so, and I was just having this discussion yesterday as I was trying to help my granddaughter do second-grade math, and I didn't have a book in front of me. So when can parents or grandparents have a book in their hand? Because then I was told that these books don't go home. So is that just, like, impossible to get a book in someone's hand at their house?
Well, as we're moving forward with our textbook adoptions, we're looking at the traditional textbook less and less. And the current math curriculum and the current social studies curriculum that we use, we do have some social studies textbooks from the previous adoption. However, we're not able to get our hands on those anymore, so we don't have many of the social studies textbooks. The math, we do not have textbooks in the, currently in the lower grades. We do have a textbook in the fourth and fifth grade, and we, we really just don't send them home anymore. We do have, you will have online access, so parents can access any of the content online, but we're really getting away from that traditional textbook with the students. Certainly, if a parent has a need, we can, we can accommodate that, and we can certainly make sure that we give parents what we need, but we're really getting away from that traditional textbook with the students. So we don't have as many textbooks in elementary any longer.
Okay. You, you know my view on that. There's gonna be some, there's gotta be some balance. I've got a college student that has both, actually, because I just paid five hundred dollars for her books, but she has it digitally, digitally, too. So, okay.
Do you have any other comments? Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Are you ready to?
Okay, so, good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Leslie Hughes, and again, I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. I'm here again this evening to provide the board with the Textbook Adoption Committee's recommendation for elementary, elementary mathematics. The textbook recommended for consideration is scheduled for implementation in the fall of two thousand nineteen. Before presenting the recommendation, I would like to thank Elementary Mathematics Coordinator Johanna Ortiz, who is here with us as well, the team of instructional specialists, we have a few with us, too, committee members, university experts for dedicating their time and efforts to choose the best textbooks for our students in Virginia Beach. On the screen, you will see the recommended first-choice textbook selection. The committee has selected Virginia Go Math as its first-choice textbook for use in elementary mathematics. The first-choice textbook aligns with the Virginia standards of learning and the mathematics curriculum for BBCPS. The textbook offers students the depth of knowledge, as well as intervention and extension options for students. Each student will be provided both a digital access and a student consumable journal. The digital component provides an interactive textbook, as well as a mechanism to help students as they work through lessons when they need assistance. Teachers will also have digital access, as well as many supplementary materials, including small-group differentiation kits that provide activities for various levels of learners. This slide outlines the cost for the initial and total implementation of the first-choice textbook for the course. The total cost involved for the first year of implementation will be just over six hundred and ninety thousand. The total cost for the three-year implementation process will be just over two million. The implementation cost allows for equal payments over the three-year period, as opposed to an initial larger purchase price in one year. The contract will allow BBCPS to renew the contract for another three years at the same pricing structure. Thank you for your consideration of the textbook committee's recommendations, and at this time, Johanna Ortiz, Elementary Mathematics Coordinator, and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Edwards?
The shift to digital, I'm sure Mrs. Williams is concerned, but I've even got a deeper one, and it's the fact that when we adopt one of these, we're committing ourselves to a new adoption. We, we don't have the flexibility of deciding to sit on that because we don't have any money, because it's a three-year subscription, and it's gone. In the past, in the past, when we had lean years or tough years or there were problems, we had the, we had the, the option to, to extend the adoption. And, and I'm, I'm really concerned, not, not only on, and obviously, the same thing applies to the social studies, but at least that's five years, but that's still shorter than we've typically done. We are getting ourselves, we, the, you know, public education in general, Virginia in, specifically, in, into a box, which is driving up the cost of education, and I, we've gotta get thoughts outside the box somehow. And I guess I would ask Dr. Spence, when, when you go to your, and meet with your leading colleagues around the country like you do, we need to push that envelope on, on, on trying to find alternatives to what the textbook industry, which has always potentially had an interesting dotted line with the Department of Education in Virginia. You know, we, we need to get ourselves less dependent and more independent as, as public education versus the textbook industry in, in general, and particularly these specifically that, that are electronic-based. I, I am shocked, worried, and concerned about the future in terms of not only service to the parents and students, but specifically the, the long-term costs and what we're doing to ourselves.
Dr. Spence? Yeah, just briefly to that, since you asked. So, I mean, a few thoughts. So, we do, we do continue to have some balance, but I do think it's worth some discussion with the board about their thoughts about digital versus standard textbooks, that we do have both in some places. One of the problems is that that's not driven by the school division, that that's driven by the publishers. And so the publishers are more and more getting out of the business of hard copy because it's more profitable, I think, for them to work in digital. And so we, we probably are fast approaching a time, and I, I think I understand, you take your point, Mr. Edwards, to be, we should be advocating against getting to this point, but I believe we're fast approaching a point where print textbooks are not going to be available to us. And so whether or not we would like them may not matter, and so that's something that we'll need to consider as we have that dialogue. And so it may be a matter of shifting paradigms. The other thing that I would add to that in a, in a very favorable way, and, and I think you'll, you've seen examples of this, for example, in our middle-school social studies adoption, is the opportunity to look at OER resources and to really begin to think about where the, where the open resources are that are available to us that are more cost-efficient than, than, than some of these publisher-driven. And I think that's probably where we're getting outside of the box, and the good news for us is that we've got a representative sitting on the OER, the state OER committee that's really investigating how we can create a broad-based, open education resources platform for K-12 education. So Dr. Poole is serving on that committee, representing Virginia Beach at the state level. So we will continue to have this dialogue. It is worth continuing to have together. And please just know, we're, in, in two thousand eighteen, we're at a bit of a crossroads on this issue, so we, we'll, we'll have to be attentive to that.
I have a question about the student consumable journals that you mentioned. Are those journals that, that are, that can go home? I mean, do they have examples in them that parents could possibly utilize?
Yes, they do have examples. Most of our schools typically do not send them home, but that does not mean they, they can't be sent home. They certainly can be sent home, and, and, and that was one reason why we, we felt strongly about the consumable product, because we know all of our students obviously don't have access to the digital at home, and then many of our, you know, younger students don't take their Chromebooks home, so we felt strongly about having something that they could have in their hands to practice their math.
I, like, third and below? Are you talking about third and below?
Yes.
Okay.
Third and below for the Chromebooks, but the, the student consumable textbook will be for K through five.
Oh, okay. Great. That's great. Anyone else? Thank you. Our final information item is advanced placement results. Welcome, Dr. Rogers.
Good evening, School Board Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, Dr. Spence, school board members. I'm Kip Rogers, the Chief Academic Officer. Tonight, I will present an overview of results for the Advanced Placement Program, or AP Program. The College Board's AP Program provides opportunities for high school students to take advanced coursework and earn college credit. AP courses are modeled on comparable college courses in a variety of subjects, including, but not limited to, English, math, science, social studies, fine arts, computer sciences, and world languages. A rigorous, a rigorous college-level exam for every AP course is also available. These tests are scored by college and university faculty and experienced AP teachers. So this presentation will focus on AP enrollment and AP exam participation in Virginia Beach schools, as well as AP exam performance at the division, state, and national levels. During the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, thirty-four of the College Board's thirty-seven available AP courses were offered by our school division. The number of Virginia Beach School students who were enrolled in at least one AP class was seven thousand two hundred and twenty-three, or two hundred and eleven more students than during the previous year. Because many of these students took more than one AP class, the total number of course enrollments exceeded the number of course-taking students. There were thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty course enrollments in the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. This was an increase of three hundred and twenty-seven AP enrollments from the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year. High school sophomores, juniors, and seniors make up the majority of AP enrollees. Last year, forty-two percent of all tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade students across the division took AP classes. This translates to about nine out of every twenty Virginia Beach sophomores, juniors, and seniors who took at least one AP class. The graph in front of you compares the percentages of Virginia Beach AP course enrollees, enrollees by ethnicity and gender with the membership percentages of Virginia Beach High School students in grades nine through twelve by ethnicity and gender. The data represent all students in high school only, with the exception of ethnic groups comprising fewer than twenty students. The light blue bars represent the AP enrollment percentages, and then the darker blue bars represent membership percentages. You can see how the percentage of AP course enrollees- You can see how the percentage of AP course enrollees compares with the corresponding membership percentage by looking at the height of each bar for a given group. So for example, male students made up 51% of total high school membership in Virginia Beach during the 2017-18 school year. However, they made up only 42% of all Virginia Beach students who took an AP course last year. Students enrolled in AP courses are not required to take corresponding exams. However, they are encouraged to take the exam. Overall, 73, 73% of Virginia Beach students who were enrolled in an AP course during the 2017-18 school year chose to take the exam. Last year, we had 5,456 students across the division who took at least one AP exam. This was an increase of 239 students from the previous school year. And just as many students take more than one AP course, many also take more than one AP exam. There were 10,123 AP exams administered in Virginia Beach last year. Almost 500 more exams than in 2016-17. The number of AP exams administered increased for most ethnic groups, including African-American students, who took over 8% more AP exams and had higher scores overall than the previous year. AP exams are scored on a scale from one to five, with five being the highest possible score. Most colleges and universities recognize qualifying AP scores, which is usually at least a three, during the admission process. And AP scores are also used for credit and course placement. Every, every year, students with the exception, excuse me, every year, students with exceptional exam performances are honored by the College Board. 1,419 students in the division were designated as 2018 AP Scholars for earning scores of three or higher in three or more AP exams. In addition, 66 students received the prestigious title of National AP Scholar for attaining an average score four or higher on eight or more AP exams.
Eight?
Even more impressive, this graph shows the percentage of AP exams that received scores of three, four, or five during the 2016-17 and 2017-18 school years. These data are exclusively for exams taken by public school students at the division, state, and national levels. As shown above in the blue bars on the left, VBCPS saw a 2% increase in exams of scores with three or more. Typically, when the number of tests taken increases, scores tend to decrease. The Virginia Beach students who took AP exams last year reversed that trend. The present of AP, the percent of AP exams that received a three, four, or a five increased by one point for the state, represented by the orange bars, as well as for the nation, represented by the gray bars. The number of students in our school division who participate in the AP program is much greater than the number of AP participants in other Hampton Roads school divisions. As shown in the graph, there were more students in Virginia Beach who took at least one AP exam in 2017-18 than the total number of AP examinees in the six other school divisions in Hampton Roads combined.
Wow.
The only other school divisions in Virginia with more AP exam test takers than Virginia Beach were Fairfax, Loudoun, and Prince William Counties. This concludes the AP presentation. An AP assessment brief will be distributed to the school board in the coming weeks, and the brief will include data that have been disaggregated by course, high school, as well as ethnicity. I do want to thank Dr. Doug Wren, who is our Educational Measurement and Assessment Specialist, for compiling this data and information for this presentation. And at this time, my team and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. McLeod? Thank you very much. As I mentioned earlier in my remarks, I've always been wowed by these. Um, it is, and Kim said it very verbally. I have a couple of questions. One is, the 73% who actually take the exams, only 73% choose to. So do we assume that the other 27% are only taking it because they want the weighted grade?
I don't know whether that's a fair assumption or not.
Okay.
I would, I would absolutely say not. I would say a lot of that is circumstances of being able to afford the exam.
However, we make it available. There is a lot of assistance that way.
That coupled with the fact that, uh, in many instances, and I have a high school junior, um, depending on the school that they want to go to, if they realize that the college won't take the credit, then they won't take the exam.
Oh, which makes sense, which was my other question. Is there any way for us to track? That makes perfect sense if they already by then know if they're going. So that's, I'm glad you guys clarified that. But, um, is there any way for us to track and like pay attention to that? Do we know what score, like, what, some schools will need, will take a three, but others require a four? Is there a way for us to, yeah, or a five, but yeah, Harvard, but anyway?
Or they don't take it at all.
Yeah, or they don't take it at all. We know if they don't take it, but then the question is, is the scores themselves? Is there a way to address that and how do we counsel our students?
So one of the questions I'll ask.
I saw her making her way up, yeah.
Good evening. In Virginia, the State Council of Higher Ed, um, has, in states that any public institution in Virginia, they do have to accept this AP scores, um, for college credit if it's a score of three or higher for the subject area, not as elective credit as in the past. For out-of-state schools, we have no control over, uh, as you know, but certainly, um, when students are going through the college admissions process, as we work with our students, we are able to find out whether or not a college will accept an AP score for content area, or whether or not it would have to be for elective credit.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes, so, so back to the cost factor for the benefit of some of us and the public again. So when it comes to SATs, the testing service, can you refresh our memory, just starting with SATs? There, is it free reduced lunch that they offer? They waive the cost? So is that the case with AP as well?
Similar.
With, with AB, with AP testing, um, we do, we are able to work with college board in, in terms of with free and reduced, uh, lunch in some instances. And in the past, Dr. Poole may have to help me with some of that. There have been state grants as well available to help for certain schools that are, uh, part of the, uh, grant that's supporting that school to ensure that any student who wants to take AP testing. And then also as a division, we have made the commitment to make sure that no student is denied the opportunity to take the test because of cost.
And just, just to clarify, if you recall, when you voted on Title IV, um, the AP and IB testing was a part of that to help with our free and reduced lunch population.
Thank you. So if I may though, so, but we're hoping that the child communicates. I mean, is there a way that we're, I mean, this goes back to Mrs. McLeod too, that we want to know why this, or is the student questioned as to why they're not taking it? So we can sift out these students?
Yes, uh, whenever a student, Mrs. Wright, does, did not, does not want to take a test, we make sure that the parent understands the benefits and the importance of the student taking the test. And also, uh, in a very, uh, non-threatening manner, we also make sure the parent knows that there are financial resources that we can assist them with if that is a barrier or they perceive it to be a barrier.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Melnick?
Thank you for broadening your presentation to include ethnicity. We've had a constituent that has really wanted that information, so I was really, I was really pleased to see that this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I too was one who said, wow, when I heard those results. Absolutely. That's something we need to applaud ourselves on and pat ourselves on the back as far as our school division goes. Great achievement. Thank you. Do we have any standing committee reports? Ms. Melnick?
Mrs. Felton and I attended the Equity Council meeting, chime in. And, um, just to, um, once again reiterate what Dr. Spence said, um, mark your calendars for Saturday, January 26th, at Green Run High School for the African-American Male Summit. And, um, our very own Green Run High grad, Dr. Charles Corpru, will be there. We had a presentation on, um, uh, creating the, uh, VBCPS Next Strategic Framework, and we had really hearty discussion on gifted identification and placement. As a matter of fact, that meeting went to about seven o'clock.
It did.
Yeah? So it was, it was a great meeting, but, um, uh, as it gets closer, we have a few more dates. Did you want? Yeah, that one. I did. Oh, you know what? Uh, the winter art display is now, starts, it started today, um, through February 4th at Pembroke Hall.
And I'd just like to say that the representative for the Equity Council is Ms. Mimi Tru.
Yeah.
She is a Vietnamese, and she's very outgoing, and she is really asking us to give her a equal chance to talk and interview all of us. She's really great. She's learning how to speak, um, she's learned how to speak English. And she said that her greatest triumph is, um, getting into middle school and being able to learn how to speak English fluently. So she's very, she's going to represent us and we will let, will you all to meet her, she's going to come and present herself to us in maybe a couple of days or so.
Thank you. Do we have any other standing committee reports? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, last week, I had the privilege of attending as the board's liaison to the Career and Technical Education Advisory Group. We met at the Career and Technical Education Center. We were served a delicious meal by the culinary students there. That turns out to be a big perk of being the liaison to that committee. We got a preview of the upcoming certification, career certification, uh, report and presentation. They'll be coming to the board soon, and I just want to say I think you'll be very pleased. And we also got the opportunity to meet, uh, seniors in the welding program at the CTE Center, uh, who were, um, just, just absolutely amazing, um, in what they were doing as far as dual enrollment, uh, what their plans were after the program. I was very pleased to see that, uh, and maybe I should, this should not have been unexpected, but there were a nu- number of female students in that program, um, and, uh, who were doing extremely well. And so, uh, the students in that program and a lot of our CTE programs just need to be applauded for just the dedication that they have to the skills that they are learning there. We questioned every student, introduced themselves, uh, and said what their plans were, and I will say that, uh, many of them were, were on the college, many of them were on the career. Uh, a vast majority of them had very solid plans for what they were doing, uh, post-graduation, and, uh, I couldn't have been prouder, and I hope you are too.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
The Audit Committee will meet, uh, Thursday this week. The Ad Hoc Committee for the Board Ethics Pledge met this afternoon, and we worked through it. I think we've provided some better focus and clarity, and it'll be, um, as discussed this afternoon, um, out to the board so that we can, uh, review it, uh, at our next meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any other? Ms. Wright?
Yes, so two things. Our Policy Committee meets this Thursday, and, uh, a second meeting of the Health Advisory Board. And, uh, I'll have to, this is such a dedicated group of, of community members, ably led by Mary Shaw, who is, and I don't want, I'm going to get her title wrong, but she, she does oversee all our, our nurses in the division. And, uh, they continue to work on a, a wellness plan for the schools, and, and I understand Dr. Robertson has been integrally involved with that process. And, uh, it'll ultimately be finalized, uh, I guess, next spring in time for the next school year, so more on that to follow.
Mrs. Williams?
Well, since this is Mrs. McLeod's last few minutes, it would be remiss of me not to say anything, um, about my wonderful colleagues sitting to the light of me. I just want to thank, thank you, Ashley, for serving the students and the citizens of Virginia Beach. It's been an honor for me to be on several committees with Ashley, including disciplinary committees, um, for many years, and also to sit here on the dais with you. As a side benefit, I have gained a lifelong friend because of our acquaintances here, um, on the school board, and I'm so thankful for that. I will surely miss you. The students and the citizens and our staff will miss you. They'll miss your tenacity, your intelligence, your, um, your objectivity, your sense of humor. You have definitely added fun to a lot of these meetings and stressful situations. Most importantly, we're going to miss the, the fact that you always listen, you did your homework and your research, you asked questions, and then ultimately you advocated and voted on what was best for students. And I admire you as a person, as a school board member, and as a true friend, and thank you once again for your service. We are better for it as a community. I am better, um, a, a better person because of you, and do not be a stranger, and I can't wait to see what the future holds for you. Thank you so much, Ms. McLeod.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do we have any other committee reports? That concludes our formal meeting.